Okay, yeah, you got a smile. Thank you. Do we need some other copy?
I just made a copy of that.
You can make it. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, do we have any nominations for recognition?
Give me your hard five and six.
No nominations for recognition. We don't have any certificates of recognition. So now we'll move into citizens business verbal. Before we move to the first item on citizens business verbal, I'd like to read some etiquette procedures. So number one is please ask the mayor to be recognized before addressing the council if you wish to make a statement. Please don't interrupt the current speaker or disrupt the meeting in any manner. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak and there will be time for rebuttals. And then upon request, an additional three minutes will be granted to the previous speakers. So with that, Pam Volteery with the Classic Summer Drags.
Thank you. I'll try my best to stay in three minutes. Thank you.
You can have an additional three.
So I'm here to just talk about the Classic Summer Drags. I know we came before and it was talked about a little bit and then we're supposed to be here, but we didn't have a blueprint yet and wanted to make sure we had a good solid blueprint before we came back and started getting more of the word out there. But I think we have a better blueprint and things that are happening. So the Classic Summer Drags are going to take place in July 16 through the 20th. The 16th is a day of more of registration. The 17th Thursday is going to be a little bit more of registration in two different poker rooms. One, a South Dakota side and one a Wyoming side, which will finish off here in Newcastle and have a meet and greet following that night at the event center, which will be open to public at a house with a casino night and a sign up option. Friday, we have the autocross, which will be in the high school parking lot. And that will start at eight, eight thirty in the morning and proceed until hopefully five or six p.m. And then it will come down to Main Street for music, car show, and others and things to that factor. On Saturday, we are planning the drag racing, which will be moved over to Highway 16. We've been working with the highway department as well as talking with the refinery in regards to that. And then that night will be back on Main Street for more music and available type, you know, with awards and things to that after. And then on Sunday, they're all free to leave. So this is going to be a huge event. We are, website is work in progress, but before the website is even 100% live, we have over 200 registrations already. And they're coming from everywhere, from Canada, Georgia, Kansas, Texas, all over the place. So we're pretty excited about this. You know, it's going to bring thousands of people hopefully to Newcastle. We figured if the little town of Hewlett can handle the handling jam, Newcastle can handle this a lot. So I printed a little bit of a copy of the Classic Summer Drags flyer that you'll see kind of go up and around the campus around. And then we do have a little bit of, I don't know if, if it's all right for great to put something up so you can see kind of a little bit of a layout of what's going to be happening. Because I know we're going to fill out all the event forms, but also with, with the drag racing, we're going to have to add a few things.
So I got to throw something real quick, Pam. Since you're presenting, we're not going to limit you to three minutes.
Okay.
I'm trying to rush a little bit.
One minute comments to three minutes.
Okay. All right, so this is the event that's going to take place on Saturday. So we've been speaking with the fire department. We've been speaking with highway department. We spoke with the refinery. And we will be, now that we have like approval from all these places, we will be talking to the residents in the frontier edition because it's going to affect their exiting on a stampede road. So, and then I believe the school is going to be working on possibly having their parking lot available at a price for cars to be able to park there and use the underpass to cross over to Centennial Park. And that's where we'll have a lot of the vendors. Sorry, I'm trying to show everybody here. And then the, where the cars and stuff are going to line up and kind of have like, I guess their pit areas or lineups and stuff is going to be kind of by the children's center and that stampede area. Because our start line is going to be here, finish line is here. And then this gives them enough area to slow down, to turn on Fairgrounds Road and then County Road back to that area there. And then if they can't slow down here, then they have the rest of the bypass to go up. We've been working with the sheriff's department as well as the city police department and search and rescue on security and having communications. So if the refinery needs to come across to get to their areas here, we're able to stop the drag racing process. If the fire department needs to leave to get to another call, we're able to stop and do what's necessary for them as well. But all the homes in frontier would either have to exit out on rodeo or maybe have to go through the fairgrounds, through Painted Hills to Marcy. So we'll be talking to all the homes there. We're going to have letters and hand deliveries to all the homes there as well as talking to all the businesses to make sure that they're ready and prepared because we know that this is going to be huge, too big for all of our restaurants. So we're going to have food vendors as well to help our motels and hotels. We've been reaching out to Morecroft, Upton, Sandown, St. Louis, and even Custer to maybe have some block of rooms for this event. And I've even had some people at the school kind of joke about, oh, I'm going to just clean out my house and rent it like they do in Sturgis. So hopefully we can get that thing. This is the first year, so I'm expecting a couple hiccups. And hopefully, it's like very little hiccups. But I think this is going to be huge and we're pretty excited about this. So we do have people that have been doing the autocross and the drag racing professionally for, gosh, Ross Dale is the gentleman doing the autocross. He's been in charge of it for over 12 years, but involved longer, maybe close to 25, 30 years in that profession. And then Richard, excuse me, I don't know his last name, Sturgis, will be doing our drag racing. And they were doing it in Sturgis during the rally, but Sturgis is not doing it anymore. So we beat up Gillette for this event, so I'm pretty excited. So, yeah, so July 16 through the 20th. I'm sure there's more things there. The school's involved, previously we're going to be using a parking lot for that autocross. We're going to have designated parking areas and transportation to get to the school because both parking lots are going to be in use for a pit area and the autocross. So people won't be able to park at the high school for the event. So we're going to talk with a couple different areas that are closed in walking distance for the people to be able to park there and walk over. Otherwise, we're going to look at, you know, having the transportation, little buses to kind of bring people in. And we'll be asking for volunteers too. We're better cultured. But, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Pam? How many cars have signed up to this point?
To this point, we've had about 200 registered. And we're not even up live yet. So it's right now, it's just kind of word for mouth from people that have been attending Sturgis. So we are looking for as many more people live. And if it's out there a bit more and closer to that event, it'll get bigger. And it's open to locals too. There, I mean, there's protocols. You can't do certain races without having a helmet and you have to wear jeans and full insurance. I mean, there's stipulations, you know, guidelines and things to that factor that they will make sure that you do have. And then, as you said, there's some vehicles come to do the drag racing that you're driving on the road with every day. So we are going to have those kind of cars all the way to people who do it professionally. So we're pretty excited.
Is there a maximum number of cars that you think that we can handle in the community?
I, I'm not exactly sure. I know that Ross and Richard both said, I want to say no more than 500. Or, yeah, I think they said no more than 500 is what they can get done in the time frame that we have given them. So.
So are we going to cap it at 500 or?
Well, not everybody's going to do the autocross and not everybody's going to do the drag racing. So we will cap it when, when the signups for that are cut off. But then if we have people drop out, then we'll still have like that extended area for kind of like a waiting list type thing, so.
Were those people that were at the barn when I showed up for that meeting that didn't happen, end up happening, were those the guys?
That, one of them was.
One of them was?
One of them was. And the other person that was there, I ended up sitting and talking with is actually that hydro panel refinery.
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
That other person that was there, I ended up sitting and talking with is actually that hydro panel refinery, Paul. We just happened to be there that night. But, yeah.
Does anybody, oh, you have a question? Go ahead.
How long is your drag race, Pam?
I think it's 650, 550?
Six fifty.
Six fifty.
About an eighty-five miles.
Any other questions? Oh, there we go.
Are there prizes for the winners and stuff?
Yeah, we asked a really cool person and if that's over here to donate and make some cool awards for us.
Okay, I just wanted to know if they're coming up here to do it for free or what?
No, we're going to have awards and then, okay, I don't know if this is the right place to talk about it, but there is a new beer that's out there, it's called Garage Beer. I don't know if anybody's heard of that. But it's actually made by the Kelsey Brothers in the NFL. And this will be the kind of like place to launch it. So we might have some really cool prizes from them. And I'm kind of hoping they're maybe some of the health players here, but I expect very big.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pam.
We're winning the best.
Yeah, we did too, thank you.
You're also the next item, citizens business verbal. So Newcastle Economic Development Board, and this is the public introduction.
Yes, so the Newcastle Economic Development Board is a committee that has been meeting for quite a while. But we figured it's time now that we have a better idea and a blueprint that we would introduce ourselves. Unfortunately, there's only two of us here tonight out of the six board members, but we have our seven man board and one board that we're pretty excited. We're going to be independent, we're going to be applying for our Title I, C3. We are going to not just work on Newcastle, but Westin County as a whole. We reached out to the Upton Economic Development Board and I don't know if CAS called you back?
What was that?
Did CAS call you back?
No.
Okay. There's some really cool things that we've been looking at. We've been talking to other people in regards to Upton's economic development. And there's a few things we want to kind of meet with them, but we wanted to speak with them and get their permission first. But we're pretty excited. A couple of things that we're working on is we're working at the museum and getting an addition for a, not just a dinosaur museum, the fact that nature is a dinosaur museum. So we're hoping to bring that to Newcastle. We're going to be working on security and safety and beautification. We're going to work on property development, workforce services, and a lot of other things. Pretty excited about one of the things we're going to be looking at a place to hopefully have an industrial park and bring some manufacturing businesses here. That's one of our biggest needs. But like I said, our board has had six, seven, we have six right now. Hopefully, we did talk to each other, but I'm individual, so hopefully we'll be joining the board. But if anybody's interested in joining economic development, I'm excited. But we're pretty excited about that, so just a question. That's it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions in regard to the Newcastle Economic Development Board?
Does anybody have any ideas to present to them?
Yeah, definitely. We love ideas. We don't think any idea is a bad idea. It's just we really want to look into the property development that's out there. So we're going to be reaching out to, we're going to have a committee that's going to reach out to all the leaders and do research on the properties that are available. And what's needed and what they're just looking to write for, for confidence there.
Who's currently serving on the board?
There's Dan Fields, Bill Hartnoff, myself, John Watts, Holly Gordon, and Cody Pashin. And then we reached out to more individuals, so hopefully.
Well, it sounds like a great mission. I mean, I, it seems like the city council should be involved in community economic development as well as the board of the county commissioners.
Yep.
So hopefully you'll correspond and collaborate with us.
Yeah, we will. We talked about that actually during our last meeting. And at least coming at least once a quarter, if not more than that, depending on what we have on the, so we'll be keeping those involved.
We didn't want to get the city council saying this and county commissioners saying this. You know how they deal, back and forth. Somebody likes this and another one doesn't. So we decided we'll go independent and present things to both of you, the city council and the county commissioners at the same time.
Excellent, that sounds like a good idea.
But we do want to work with everyone. Like I said, we want this to be a whole time and a lot of work for Upton and maybe even meet with them and have kind of like, okay, what are you, what are you guys ready for? So if we interact with the business and it's not going to fit us, but it's going to fit them, we want to be able to work that way in the, not just Newcastle, but Westin County, right? So, yeah. I think we've got a pretty good vision, so we just got to do it all in our policies and procedures and that.
Excellent, what a lovely idea. So does anybody else have any questions for Pam? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is Board of County Commissioners for the EMS district. It's great to see all the county commissioners in here.
Nathan Todd, good evening, Mayor O'Connell. In 2023, you guys, I believe are familiar with this, that I think Campbell County has come in front of you before over this EMS district issues. So in 2023, the state legislature made it an opportunity for a board of county commissioners under 18, 12, 105 to be able to formulate a EMS district veto resolution. So we have a 60-day timeframe where we need to propose, if they need this proposed resolution out to the public advertised for a public hearing. So as of today, that proposed resolution was sent to Newsday Journal, less than ten days after posted on our website. So the process has been initiated. The public hearing will be, they have it up, the 31st, I believe, at 6 o'clock at the event center, the Fairgrounds. A little background on it. If we so choose after the public hearing to develop this, this district, we then form a board of three to nine members. And this board then takes upon them the task of assessing the needs for the county financially for probably Campbell County Memorial Hostels usage and for Upton ambulance usage. Then once that is assessed, they come to the board to ask for, say, a mill. If they decide that a mill is going to cover their expenses for that district, they come to the board and ask to be put on the next election cycle. And then it goes to a vote of the people whether or not they want to institute this mill on their tax, taxing deal. So the, it can only be as high as four mils. I can't doubt them that they would need that much. It seems like that'd be an awful lot personally to go that high. But it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. There's, what else do you need to know? There is, in my personal opinion, I think there's probably a great need for this asset to develop in the community. I know there's a lot of times that we don't have the ambulances available, but ship multiple people multiple times. So there is another aspect to creating this district. It doesn't have to be countywide right now, the proposed is countywide. So say the population of Upton unanimously shows up and says absolutely not, we can draw that line where we deem necessary to have this district. So, yeah, it's, it's still up in the air. There's, I think we'll hopefully learn a lot on the 31st. There's some misinformation floating around via email. This is not a glass ceiling we're breaking. It's been done before in the state. So we're, and I'm currently attempting to follow a lot of what they started in that Platte County one, so we're not trying to tread new water here. So that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if you guys have any questions or thoughts or anything I can help with with information?
We were on track to be the first, the first one.
Yeah.
But it's still, but Platte County, we just, basically.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I just remembered that when I came to you guys' meeting and was asking about some of this stuff that I got schooled on statutes, because I came in kind of ignorant and then you guys schooled me up and then, and then got the resolution passed. So it was a, I thought I came out on me when we didn't feel pretty good.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, things happen. We got busy doing our stuff and didn't follow through with it, but now that we've started the process, so, Mr. Box, you have something here?
I was going to ask, in the 60 days from today, I guess, wouldn't?
Sure, yeah, I would say once it hits the papers.
Exactly what has to happen? What are we going to do for 60 days? Do we want to promote, we want to get out and talk to everybody?
Yeah, and that's why I'm here. This isn't a public hearing. All this is just an informative deal for the folks in Newcastle and board, your guys' board. And the, that hearing on the 31st will probably be starting pointed at 60 days. This isn't a public hearing. All this is just an informative deal for the folks in Newcastle and board, your guys' board. And the, that hearing on the 31st will probably be the starting point at 60 days. And then we can't do anything until that 60-day timeframe is over. It's really not that much a necessity because it still has to come up for a vote to the public to institute any mills. But at least the balls are all in now and we can hopefully get a board established, find at least three people who want to give it and get that process started so that they can invest, get what they can get done with it. Mr. Pan?
Would there be any benefit for Upton's ambulance with this?
So part of the statute, Upton has always been a, how do I turn this? There was, for a long time, there was a lot of discomfort for people that served on the volunteer ambulance department in Upton charging people. Well, that will be a requirement now under this resolution. They will have to bill insurance companies, Medicare, those kind of deals. Now, there's nothing in the resolution or that type of eighteen that I see, 12105 or any of the associated subsections that they can go after an individual, you know, until they leave and drive. But they can go after things like that. Now, for Upton, they're aware of that. And I believe that what the board is going to have to do is have to figure out what Upton's needs for their service. And because there's going to be a completely different handle than what you guys have going on here in Newcastle.
Will that be a special election or will it go?
It can be, yeah. If we, if there are ducks in our own time and we can do it, it certainly can be a special election.
Does there are any further questions?
I'm going to add something to this. What's really nice about having a district is that if Campbell County leaves, we have funds for ambulances where they're private, they leave, they take their stuff. It will leave our county with an account to actually provide some kind of service at least or get one started at Campbell County.
Yeah, it's really a portion of the deal, but small counties like this and communities, they're forward services. So it's a, it's a vehicle to try to make it happen. I, you know, I did math a week or so ago. This won't be accurate next year because things have changed with tax legislation and certain things. But last year for me, it was about $20 a mill for per $100,000. But last year for me, it was about twenty dollars a mill for per hundred thousand dollars of ownership on my property. So and that'd be your, your house and the associated land side of your house. So if you had a two hundred thousand dollar home, that was one mill, it's about forty dollars worth of insurance that I'd be paying a year to hopefully get an ambulance to my house if I needed it. So granted, that could be four mills. I don't foresee it probably going in that direction. But it'll be interesting to see what the board comes up with. But it's a, and those are last year's figures off of last year's valuation. So that will change, but I don't see anything too dramatic.
I got it.
Go ahead.
A little clarification on the mills. The way that works is when the vote comes out, you'll be voting for two mills. And those two mills will always be there every year. For the additional, for four mills, it's just like the hospital district. They have to come back every election and ask for the additional two mills. So the first election will be for your two mills across the board. And then after that, they can go for an election and ask for an additional two mills.
Thanks, sir.
And then if the district, if they get flesh on money, they can not request a full two mills, but you never want to take it off because then you have to go back to the election, but they can always drop it down. If their budget doesn't justify two mills, they're going to justify the half a mill. That's what they ask for.
Thank you.
Good evening. Marty.
Your hat.
Gordon, my hat. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah.
Appreciate you guys' interest moving forward with this.
Yeah, we asked. Thanks a lot, commissioner. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to Citizens Business Verbal Newcastle Soccer League, Newcastle Youth Softball League and Newcastle Baseball League, which, full disclaimer, I've been in contact with all three of the boards and spoken at length with, with membership of each board. And then Brian Metford actually prepared a statement with me on the phone earlier today that I'll read for the Newcastle Baseball League. But let's go ahead and, and start with the Newcastle Soccer League.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for coming us tonight. We're here to express concern over the Newcastle Youth Softball League's memorandum of understanding of the designer agenda of your old business. As it came to us third hand and not directly from that association, it appears that they are attempting to secure exclusive use for their association of Field Two of the OC Kearney Sports Complex between the months of April and August. I'm sure some of you are aware, but the soccer season in the spring runs the end of the last week of March through mid-May. And we have had those seasons and use the complex since across from nineteen ninety. By taking Field Two away from the Soccer League, you're impacting forty-two children ages eight years and younger. You're impacting multiple families that have dual registrations, multiple aged kids. At the Soccer Board spent four hours last week trying to make accommodations for those parents to have siblings practicing at similar times, obviously at the same location, because we weren't aware that this was up for discussion and had already been in the city council. We've established a very good working relationship with the city council in the past. We've worked collaboratively with Newcastle Little League Baseball for many years. As we run into similar scheduling conflicts with them and it's never been an issue. They allow us to use the outfield and Field Two for two weeks in May. If their T dollars need space, they're working around that or they're adjusting practice schedules for that two week overlap. The Newcastle Soccer League feels it's unfair that the Softball Association is requesting a five month exclusive access to the field for a six week season. We have two other board members present. I don't know if they'd like to add anything, but.
What do you have to speak? Oh, I want to show.
Yeah, I'll add something to that, too. An idea was brought up that we could consider switching that U six to U eight field to another location in the city such as a park. Our concerns with that would be that we do not have any storage shed facilities at any of those locations to store our equipment. Therefore, we also don't have any place to store our goals. And some of our goals we just have purchased, you know, looking at the nets for things, and those goals would be at risk of being destroyed. And then we don't have any way to paint those fields. So right now we have our field painters at the sheds by the senior center. That would require somebody hauling those painters to the parks and then making sure that we can get those painted at that time. And we don't have the means to have that happen. Additionally, we prep and condition our fields during practice time or when the facilities aren't being used by other organizations. Never once in our history have we demanded exclusive use of a public space for five months for a six week season. We understand that, that public space is limited in Newcastle for youth programming. We do not want to put the Softball Association out. My children, had it been around when they aged out of machine pitch, would have been interested in such program. But we don't think that it should, it should be at the detriment of well-established programs that are already looking collaboratively on similar scheduling issues.
Do you have an idea how, how many hours a day or times that your Soccer League would need Field Two?
So up on Field Two is one U six field and the U eight North field.
Thank you.
So it would impact forty-two children. This keep in mind, this is just the practice schedule. We do not have a game schedule yet. That Black Hills scheduling meeting won't be until March twenty second. Our U sixteen's, U sixteen's practice for thirty minutes twice a week. And our U eighteen's practice for forty-five minutes twice a week. So we're looking at a minimal amount of time. Like I said, all of our field painting and goal setting and rearranging happens during those practice times. So we're not on the fields outside of the times that we've given to Newcastle Little League Baseball already.
So what you're asking for is this proper scheduling?
Proper scheduling and not for the red to be pulled out underneath those two weeks before our season starts. These schedules have been disseminated to all coaches and all parents. Last week, our season starts Monday, March twenty fourth. And had we not gotten rid of this third hand, it's my understanding that the MOU would have been approved tonight and the Softball Association could have kicked us off the field starting April first, putting forty-two kids out of the practice space versus the remainder of their season.
Yeah, I'd like to apologize for that. I even coached U six soccer and I had kids that practiced on Field Two, baseball Field Two, which are, you guys calling it, it's Field One, U six?
Those are our soccer numbers, but yeah, so the baseball Field Two is the U six and the U eight North field.
Is U, U what?
U six and U eight North. Those first two columns are painted up on the baseball field.
So U eight also utilizes the outfield and field.
So I did draft our own MOU and included a map of our field layout as we have it set up for this current season. This has been the layout for the last three seasons as we average have a hundred participants in each season of the softball year or start of the soccer year. The spring season will accommodate eighty-four players.
So when I was coaching my son, that was probably twelve years ago. So you guys have been practicing on that specific field for probably longer than that.
Longer than my children have been involved. And I guess, I mean, to be brutally honest, it's very disheartening that there are board members on the Softball Association Board that have children currently involved in the soccer program or previously involved in the soccer program. And there was no contact with the Soccer Board at all.
Okay. So that being said, again, I apologize for my oversight because I was ready to push the memorandum of understanding through with the last council meeting. And then cooler heads prevailed because I thought we were pushing up against timeframe issues. And I forgot about the Soccer League because I don't have any kids in soccer right now. It's been a while. But so one thing I would like to throw out, one thing is the, the Newcastle Youth Softball League is, it's not a new idea. I guess it comes in phases. The, the Newcastle Youth Softball League is, it's not a new idea. I guess it comes in phases. So it happens every like six to eight years or something like that. Somebody tries to develop a youth softball league. And I, I believe that the girls do need a place to practice and I'm sure that you would agree. You want them to be able to practice as well. So it's going to, it's going to take some work through the community and the, and the boards. And, and that oversight, you know, on the Youth Softball League, not contacting the Soccer League. Did I say softball? Softball League, Soccer League. Okay. But anyway, so we gotta, we're going to have to make that up. And I didn't know exactly how this was going to unfold tonight. So it might require some meetings on the side. We're not going to handle all of this business tonight during the city council meeting. But just know that you've been heard. And I'll go ahead and read Brian Metford's statement. Oh, sorry. Pam, go ahead.
Can you guys use the other baseball field, the bigger one?
That's utilized as well.
It's the favors. That's favor.
And their season starts earlier than it will be.
And it's sixty ninety, so it's different bases.
Interesting.
We've been spoiling that option in the past and with their, their scheduling and the field size requirements, it just doesn't work. I mean, there have been seasons in the past where we've had three U six fields squeezed up there. I mean, and I mean, do not get me wrong, we are in support of the youth having more options in town. But I'd like to reiterate that our registration is closed. We have final numbers. Coaches and parents have been notified and we're, we're ready to start. We start in less than two weeks.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I just didn't know what to say about baseball. You mentioned baseball.
Yeah.
So we utilize that field between the hours of four P M and eight A M.
I don't think there was anybody from baseball here. You're not with the soccer.
I don't believe you're hanging.
Well, Brian said you thought everybody was working or. So go ahead.
Between the hours of four P M and eight P M, that Field Two is utilized Monday through Friday. And I think what you'll find in the back is that we're more willing to work together and figure out the logistics of scheduling. But that is our concern as well is the exclusive rights.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and read Brian's statement and then I'll let you, if there's no questions for the Soccer League, then I'll let Ashley speak about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the materials too. You're very prepared. So I spoke with Brian Metford on Sunday and then I spoke with him again today prior to the meeting. But Brian stated that the Newcastle Baseball League has been a successful program for the past fifty-nine years. Next year will be their sixtieth, so they're pretty excited about that. And it was his understanding that the reason for the MOU was so that the Newcastle Youth Softball League could secure a spot in the Hills Softball League. But that he's not completely comfortable with the language in the current MOU. He agreed with the MOU to help Ashley and the board through the process of joining the league. So you needed a MOU to be able to join the league so that you could participate in their circuit? Is that correct?
Right. No. We needed an MOU. We had to have a field that we could host games in possible terms. So because no other, as far as our understanding, there was no current MOU and the concerns of the previous boards that have tried to start the Softball League were simply they had no place or no like secured place to be able to practice, nothing in writing. One of our very first steps after we had significant interest was to move forward with putting a formal MOU in place so that we knew we had a location that the girls could practice and we could host games.
So it's, it's not like, it's not a requirement of you guys to be able to be, participate in the league for the Hills?
I think you'll see just from the statements that have already happened today, it is a requirement because of the logistics. And we are trying to go even above and beyond what's needed to make sure that there's a space available to host.
I'll move on with reading Brian's statement and then I'll give you some time at the end, sir. But he stated that with the room that's currently at the sports complex, he believes that all parties involved are going to need to work together to share the space for the kids. He also stated that he is willing to help with field preparation and provide support wherever needed as long as everyone is cooperating. Brian noticed that a weekend was missing from line item one and he'd like to add the weekend prior to Memorial Day as well to that, to the MOU as it, as it reads now.
It is, isn't it?
Um, because it's.
Memorial Weekend.
Because it was Memorial Weekend, but he, he also mentioned the weekend prior to Memorial Day weekend. That's the one that he noticed that was missing. I provided him with the MOU. It sounded like you had given him an early copy. But I gave him the most recent copy that I've been provided. And then Brian told me that not all practice needs to be done on the field. And sometimes due to limited space, non-field related practice could be done in one of the other city parks, which he says that the, the boys from the Baseball League utilize other spaces to make it work, you know, when they don't require bases and a field like catch and stuff like that. And then the last thing is, is the part that I think is where we, we might have gotten the hitch in our giddy up. And that Brian also stated that he had mentioned to Ashley to contact the Newcastle Soccer League about the use of Field Two for the U six soccer teams. He called them the little shit soccer kids. And, and so he, he said, but that, that he had mentioned it to you, that he needed to get ahold of them. And then was there a reason that, that you weren't able to do so?
We didn't discuss getting ahold of them before the meeting last week after I talked to them.
Okay. He, he said that he had mentioned it to you, that he needed to talk to them because they did practice up there. So I guess there was a miscommunication somewhere. So that's all I have, the report from Brian on the Newcastle Baseball League. And do you have anything that you'd like to follow up with, sir?
I don't think so. I mean, I know Brian personally, he, he's very willing to help promote anything for kids, specifically ball sports, baseball, softball. So I don't see why we can't all work together to.
Make it.
Build a formal document to share the space and, and make things work.
So now with that, I'll allow you to speak for the Newcastle Youth Softball League.
Thank you. So I think basically what they'll see is that with all of the history with bringing a softball team to the community, we did feel like a formal document was required. Now we're in this, we're asking for exclusive rights of Field Two. Our line item five is clearly stating that other sports and sports groups and entities are welcome and would be welcome to utilize that space. We're asking that our practice schedule and games. We're asking that our practice schedule and game schedule be taken into consideration when considering the use of a softball field. Until this last uh, meeting when we discussed the soccer, um, I was unaware that there was any other MOU in place for any other uh, sports association in the community. I reached out to a previous um, uh, city council member and asked simply, and this was back in, it would have been September of last year, did I reach out to the, to the attorney? How do I reach out to make sure that we're doing everything, um, I guess, the most appropriate way? Um, this was the solution. This is, this is what we've put together. Um, again, we as a, a new association, um, understand um, there's definitely gonna be some hiccups and there's a lot of uh, different moving parts to this. I think um, we've been told for the past nine years that we lived here that uh, there was a desire for softball. We did do that clinic in the summer and we had eighteen girls show up and it was a great experience. From there, we opened up the registration on March first and within the first half of this month, we now have twenty-nine or thirty uh, girls set up. Um, so that's only half the month. We still have half a month for registration. Um, so I feel like we would also displace those girls that haven't even been able to have a chance. And the new association that has went through the five oh one three C process as well as tax exam process, switching games accounts for funds that were already there. Numerous, numerous hours already put into the, the process. Um, I would like to also mention that we had asked for April first through August thirty-first. Please understand that that is not just um, our practice and play schedule. We have clinics and other things that we've set up um, in hopes of being able to use the field. These are eight, ten, twelve, and fourteen youth girls that have never had an organized softball team in the community. And we have pitching clinics and other things that we um, would like to bring pitching, catching, fielding um, to help get them to the level they, they need to be um, to compete within that recreational league. As far as the MOU, um, the main, the main, I guess, uh, reason as well was simply that uh, they did ask the Northern Hills Softball League. Um, the requirement was that we had a field um, that we could host as well. Not just sign up to come to their league and we'll all travel, you know, to their, their places. But we have nowhere to um, host any games as well.
How many games would you have to host?
Yeah, so it would start on May nineteenth and the schedule is still out. But it would be games, it looks like based on our teams that we have already had committed. Um, three nights a week. They said the games would be Mondays and Thursdays. Um, and be double headers. So they would play two games every night. Um, and it just depends on rotation. There are five teams in the rotation four days a week. So there are gonna have to be some double up, um, field certainly during that time.
So I'm excited, and I was excited for the, um, for the softball league. Um, I think it's a great thing for the girls. Uh, but there's a lot of, uh, you know, the other two organizations have been pretty longstanding in the community. So there just needs to be some collaboration and maybe some adjustments to your MOU if you decide to go with the MOU, um, so that we can accommodate, you know, other people. I, I had mentioned um, the utilization of-
Michael Stolkin did things right. And, and what Nathan Todd did in that meeting, dressing him down, he said not to pick sides. No, he did pick sides. And he picked Becky Hadlock's side. And once again, Becky Hadlock was wrong. So thank you on behalf of the people of Weston County, to Michael Stolkin for stepping up and doing the job that the people elect him to do.
Well, and not only was she wrong, but once we finally got our records request, she was even more wrong cause it was incomplete. And the state public records ombudsman admitted that and said that those documents should have been included. Um, so I just find it interesting that everybody puts faith in someone who continues to make the same mistakes, which at this point aren't mistakes.
The impression that we got that the softball association was asking for exclusive rights to the field came from the MOU that was sent to our field coordinator from the softball association. And in that MOU, it does state that they are requesting access seven days a week from April first until August thirty-first with first rate of refusal to any entities who are on that field, which is why we thought that that was asking for exclusive use. And then also that same scheduling document that Jennifer passed out was also shared um, on Saturday the fifteenth in the same message with the schedule. I would just like to point out that the soccer league did not send that to the softball association asking for permission to use the field. We sent it in the same procedure that we sent it to the Little League, the Brian and Riley, saying these are the two weeks we're going to have conflicts. We were not asking for permission. It was trying to be collaborative and put it out there, taking the first step, saying, hey, we kinda know what you're doing and we're gonna have to work through this.
So then I wanna add something too. Uh, we don't have a huge facility in the community. Uh, and with some of the things that came through the legislature, I don't imagine that we're gonna be able to add any more space in the very near future. So the current space that we have is, is what we got. So it's gonna take a lot of effort and a lot of give and take on every board's side to get it figured out and make it happen. And like you're, I mean, it's kind of a wonder, but like, you are the, the new kids on the block. So you're just gonna have to do the best that you can to get this figured out.
Some question or a hand. But I think it's great that there is organizations out there trying to bring other things in for the kids to do cause that's what we hear all the time. There's nothing for kids to do all the time. And then trying to figure out a working relationship with all of the entities, especially with things that's been already established. My kids were in soccer when they were really young. There are probably some of you guys that don't even remember when we had soccer fields over by the dump in Pete Fields' place and had to play in some pretty rough areas where we got this area put together in that city. Eventually it got expanded on the baseball field to help reduce some of the conflicts of trying to get the little kids up to, you know, the- Easy to go into that piece cause we've already set our footing into an area. But in order to try to collaborate, you know, the first year might be um, not everything we need, but at least we can try to get this going with these fields. Let's sit back and think about what's for the future. What can we do? Yeah, we're gonna have to give up something. There's a give and take everywhere. Can we potentially move the storage pieces over to another facility? I know with the younger ones, everyone wants to be in those areas to try to be in one area. But like I said, the facilities around here, um, I know even high school with the gyms, we never had the, the second gym at high school. We didn't have a cabin. Now we still don't have spaces in there because we've got three gyms there and it still don't have enough space. We just keep adding to that. What we, what we sit back when we try to organize and figure out a schedule and it, it gets done. Um, I know this first year probably gonna be headaches to try to work out. But if, if, everybody can sit down on top of it and come up with a plan and say, it's gonna be hard for us, but we could move this to one of the other parts of it. You know, that big um, basketball field, there are a big area in there that can probably be utilized. As this grows or tries to um, get more people here, I remember when I was a kid, all three of these fields all the time when I was playing baseball. I just think you always need to keep going and just having to sit down and really talk about what's best for all organizations because to me, I think this is really good that we're able to bring other things in here for kids to do.
I'm excited for it too.
I, I just have one, one additional comment. You know, if we had known this was coming, we could have made our schedules and our field layout differently for this season. Our concern, we can, we can schedule on top, we can paint fields, crossways, across small fields, across big fields and work it out internally in the fall and next spring. Our concern is our season that starts in two weeks. Where we're tied it down with paint fields next weekend, we're starting practice the next day and now we're in limbo. The soccer league needs a decision on whether we're allowed to use that field for the spring season, knowing if there's only going to be a one to two week overlap or not, or if we need to scramble and figure something else out in the next week.
We really asked um, on the fifteenth when we received that, um, when does the season start? How long does your season go? Thank you for sending us this. And we never, we didn't ever reply after that. We then said that um, this was our schedule, this is when we were planning on meeting for practices and sent our um, MOU that we had previously presented. Um, as far as the use of the fields, um, not of the little, you know, um, the, the soccer at all, um, but any small footprint for a six U, eight U flat ground, I would assume is, is what we're looking for. Uh, basically the softball has one spot. Um, and we did plan to work that out with baseball. As far as us taking the soccer into consideration, that's still um, on us. Uh, just didn't know that working out priority with the soccer on a baseball softball field was something we had to consider, so.
Okay, so I guess, I, I think what will close this session there, um, we'll go ahead and have you guys get together, see what you come up with and then we can move forward from there.
I think I'm with Jennifer in the fact that unless, you know, there's, I think now it's in the hands kind of of the city council. Um, we've tried, this is-
Okay, well then we'll move on to that agenda item and old business here in a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should uh, regulate this to the Parks Department and have that be the Parks Department figure out what's going on.
So you, you think that this would be appropriate for a Parks Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it includes him.
Oh, I, I would come, before we get to there, maybe all three boards schedule time and sit down together. Outside of the city boards, we'll get schedules, we'll try to work something out. We can leave the parks out of it for right now. And figure out the logistics. I don't think games are a problem at all. Practices aren't a problem. We've got T-ballers, lots of soccer's done, they go out and find a spot, they practice. Machine pitch finds a spot and they practice. For baseball, the majority of the scheduling is games and I, we can figure that out.
Okay.
I think softball would appreciate a regulatory body being part of this negotiation.
Um, okay, so that's Melvin. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to citizens' business in writing. Uh, Weston County Museum District Sewer averaging. Uh, Dear City of Newcastle, Weston County Museum District promotes tourism for Weston County through the use of brochures, pamphlets and web, and the website and Facebook. The district would like to request sewer averaging for the months of April twenty twenty-five through September twenty twenty-five. And we appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, uh, Cindy Dysar, the Weston County Museum District.
Your Honor, this is the, I have a question. The museum district includes up there. Isn't, isn't up in part of the museum district listed?
Hey guys, we've been referencing the Anna Miller Museum.
Okay, well I'm moving, we do the part and we can average the part that we can average.
So you're, you're making a motion?
I moved, so, yes.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passives to average uh, the Anna Miller Museum's uh, sewer. Um, moving on to Generation Plumbing, a request for a plumbing license. Uh, the following requested plumbing license, contractor Generation Plumbing. Uh, master plumber, literally cool name, uh, Benjamin Beautiful Ball Eagle, uh, journeyman plumber, Justin Stife Vader, and apprentice plumber, Hayden Losna. All fees have been paid, the copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for twenty twenty-five. Do we entertain a motion to approve the plumbing license for Generation Plumbing?
I saw who.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If they are, if they are a real company.
Um, all fees have been paid, copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for twenty twenty-five. They're not Rapid City, Salt Lake City. Okay. Okay. Um, is there any discussion? Do we have a motion properly seconded, right? There was a second.
It was second.
It was second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passives for Generation Plumbing's uh, uh, plumbing license. So now we came around the horn and we're back to old business. Uh, Newcastle Youth Softball League MOU. Would you like to speak any further, um, Ashley?
The Newcastle Softball League would like the city council to consider um, the MOU um, that we've submitted at the, at the last meeting um, for the use of Field Two. Um, we were happy to meet with them, uh, any of the boards at any, any point. Um, what we do feel is imperative uh, for us to have something, I guess, in writing that gives us the right to use uh, the field at some point.
So council, you've all been uh, provided with a copy of the memorandum of understanding for the Newcastle Youth Softball Association. Do we entertain a motion to adopt or accept the memorandum of understanding? Does everybody need a minute to read?
I don't see anyone in my stuff.
Oh. Uh, I'll, I'll wait for everybody to read. Go ahead, Garrett.
I have a question. I wanted to know what our city attorney's first impression of the MOU was.
Frankly, I don't understand the entirety of the dynamics between the soccer um, group or youth baseball or softball, to be completely honest. What I do understand at least to the extent in the terms that it was stated in is at first it was a lease. Um, that was something that I absolutely did not recommend. And then two, on, in terms of some of the language that we have- That was something that I absolutely did not recommend. And then two, on, in terms of some of the language that we have in the MOU right now, I, I understand that there are differences in interpretation, but this absolutely is an exclusive right MOU. And as for those reasons, frankly, I think the party should probably actually convene and talk about said MOU before moving forward.
Thank you.
So, as everybody had a minute, put a moment of time to look at the current MOU.
Your Honor, in, in an effort to discuss the MOU, I will move that we pass the MOU.
Do we have a second?
Are we just talking to discuss?
Now we open up the discussion.
Do you second?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yes.
I think that even though I had a motion to, I wanted, I wanted to get to the discussions, the only reason I made the motion. And I, I agree that this language here that is just not particularly offensive, but it's just, it's kind of, you know, like building a little box. And I, I would like you to get, all of you to get together and from the language of your communications, you give us a new MOU. And, and while that enclose your agreement and that your agreement then becomes your, your guarantee, because they've guaranteed you an agreement on how you can use the fields and, and, and we've got other things to discuss, like you had some clinics that you wanted to do. Well, I know that we have other parks that are way large enough to do a clinic in, and pitching clinics and things like that. And that's just a matter of getting together with the Parks Committee or Greg and getting some of your things set up through there. And, and even the soccer. I mean, we've got, for little kids, we've got big places of grass that they can play soccer. So you can back off a little bit, maybe use some of our other, uh, parks to do some of your soccer on. So there's, there's, there's a way to get this to agree. Everybody can be happy now.
Is there any further discussion?
We just discussed this three hours ago. We made a decision three hours ago. Why are we doing this again?
Is there any further discussion?
We just discussed this three hours ago. We made a decision three hours ago. Why are we doing this again? Yeah, we did. We decided to let them work it out first and then come back.
It's still an agenda item that has been important to discuss and order to approve the MOU.
I guess I was under the impression at the last meeting initially that you had already contacted, that you had talked to these other organizations that use fields. That was my impression. I just thought that everybody was kind of in agreement. So, um, I was not aware that the soccer had not, people did not know anything about it. I believe, because my kids are in both things, so I want everything. I think something could be worked out somehow. We don't want to say no to anything that's for our kids, that's for sure. And when there's a number that you're giving us, both, both organizations, that is a big number of children that are interested in this sport, we want to see if we can't work together. I think that's my thinking. So I'm back to if you guys can all meet, if you need us to meet with you, I don't want to make any decisions because I'm not there, but I am on the Parks Committee.
I think there's other places, not necessarily for the games, but for practice in the city. I coached softball thirty-something years ago, and we used the lot out at the Pinnacle Bank.
You betcha. Well, we created a softball league on that lot, you know? And clean some glass and rocks and stuff.
We had, and we used it for practice fields. So there's other places.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just gonna say to all of you that I'm going to vote against my own motion here, in the hope that you're all gonna get together and come up with a workable solution for all three groups. And, and I'm, I'm gonna vote against the MOU, but I'm not against girls soccer or baseball, or I mean, girls softball or soccer or baseball. I'm for all that. It's just that we need, we need a better, a better foundation to agree upon than this MOU.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion properly seconded. Um, there's no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Uh, motions denied. So with that, um, it's back to the drawing board, Ashley, and then maybe come next council meeting and present a different MOU after you've collaborated with some of the other organizations a little bit more thoroughly. Thank you. Uh, moving on to business, there's no business. Uh, I'm the committee and council member reports. Item one is NewEe or again two. So, uh, NewEe is part of District Two of Lam. It's an organization that represents the, uh, the collective officials and their clerks for Northeast Wyoming, so NewEe, Northeast Wyoming.
That's where New came from, right?
Yeah. So it was, uh, we sent out an invite to everybody on the council and we had some pretty good attendance. Uh, myself, uh, Councilman Kenny, um, Councilman Budson, and Councilman McCollough all showed up for the meeting. Uh, they were pleasantly surprised to see us in attendance because it'd been some time since Newcastle had been involved with NewEe at all. It was at the Upton City Hall. And I'm speaking for myself right now, but I, I got, I got some schooling at that meeting. Uh, they discussed what has been taking place at the state legislature. Uh, and after they went through quite a few motions, and I, I actually neglected to bring, um, the specific statutes. There were statutes that they actually suggested that we have, you look at that one. So I'll provide that for you, um, later. Uh, but, uh, I actually had to speak out during the meeting because a lot of the items that they were discussing were kind of over my head. And, uh, so I, I learned a lot and there was a great networking opportunity because there was city administrators and mayors from across the region. I think we had Sheridan there. There were folks from Gillette. Uh, the board chair of NewEe is actually out of Douglas, Wyoming. And she brought her city administrator. Um, so it was, it was really, I felt it was a successful meeting and, and I really learned a lot. And I didn't know of any of the other council-
I thought it was very informative. I came away from there feeling very scared, to just say that.
Yeah, and then, oh, and Clerk Dagerty came too. That was awesome. We're really glad that Clerk Dagerty-
She took notes.
So, uh, it is kind of paint a darker picture for some of the legislation that passed, um, the Wyoming Legislature as far as property taxes and how our revenue was gonna be affected. So I, I kind of fear right now that, um, this is gonna be our, our last good weather cycle for a while. So, uh, anyway, uh, we'll have to see how it all pans out. But we, you know, so, uh, the folks from Sheridan, they were like, well, we're not really gonna be affected. And they had a, a nice spreadsheet that kind of painted the picture for them. Well, we don't have economy of scale like they do, so it's gonna affect us a lot more than it does someplace like Sheridan or Gillette. So unless anybody else that attended the meeting has anything to add, um, I'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Okay. Next agenda item is Boys and Girls Club. Uh, I'd been approached by a community member that was interested in being involved with starting a Boys and Girls Club, um, here in Newcastle. I kind of ran on one of my campaign promises of more activities and programs for kids. So I looked into it and I spoke with somebody from the Cheyenne Boys and Girls Club. He said that, uh, basically they have shut down opening any new clubs. But we could actually operate under another club within, um, the area, so it would be possible to open a Boys and Girls Club here in Newcastle under Gillette. So I, I, he gave, I gave him all my contact information. He's supposed to get back with me and then see if, uh, uh, somebody reaches out from the Gillette office. And then I contacted the, the party in Newcastle that's willing to volunteer, work towards making that happen. Um, so we'll just have to see how it goes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Point of interest is Warren Buffett donates money to Boys and Girls Club, so they might want to get a hold of him and try to get some seed money or something to get it started. That's, that's one of his pet projects.
Wow, and he's got-
Good to know. I was studying all too.
So, uh, thank you. Okay, uh, does anybody else have any questions about Boys and Girls Club? I don't hear any. Okay. Uh, moving on to the next agenda items, snow removal. So at the NewEe meeting, uh, there was actually the city administrator from Gillette. Uh, he left messages with his office about something I brought up a couple of council meetings ago about, here in the Gillette doesn't provide, uh, snow removal. I followed up with him briefly at that meeting, and apparently that's not true. Uh, Gillette spends about two to three million dollars a year on snow removal. So I, I, whoever told me that it, it wasn't happening must have been mistaken. They, but they probably take care of their main thoroughfares and then, uh, maybe they don't provide a lot of snow removal on the side streets. But, uh, it, it wasn't true. Um, so it's a, I, I won't even bring it up again at, at council that we even think about, uh, getting away from our snow removal policy. Uh, but I do think that maybe we could refine it a little bit. I've been approached by a few citizens about, um, what they think's wrong with it, and I'd like to discuss it with you a little bit further in the future. Does anybody, go ahead, Mr.-
There's one other thing I'd like to mention about snow removal, our last, our last Streets Committee meeting that we had. And that is there, there are persons in the community that are taking snow removal in front of their lots and pushing it into our, our alleyways and blocking alleyways and blocking other people's access to their property. And, um, we were, the committee discussed that we should approach not the people that have been in the snow removal and, and, and the guy running the truck. We approach the property owners who are hiring those persons. And there, there's, the law is very clear that that is only and totally illegal and it's a final offense. And I think that the city council needs to, uh, work up a letter going to the property owners. We'll get with Greg and figure out who's who and who's who we need to send a letter to, but that, I don't think we need to put up with that anymore. And I just thought I'd bring that up under snow removal. And that's what we discuss on snow removal.
Okay, and I lost to understand that there was a Streets Committee meeting. Was the Streets Committee, not on the agenda, but does the Streets Committee have anything to report?
I gave you guys the note to be, we also discussed the program.
Yeah, I think we discussed that.
If it's all right with council, you can report.
Yeah, that's on the, for that.
I provided the Streets Committee with the snow removal policy. The one we work from every snow. Uh, we have a priority list of streets, starting with priority one, which is three blocks of Main Street here, one block away on Summit, Sanica, Sundar, Amaretto. After that, we have other priority streets. Mainly dealing with the arterial streets first, and the collector streets, and then finally the water streets. Bus routes take priority precedents, and so do, uh, emergency service areas, ambulance service, police department, sheriff's office, and fire department. Um, we did discuss the general snow policy. As long as we're going to make windrow or we started making the windrow, it's not a big deal for some people to push us snow in our winter. Problem is, we don't pile a lot of our streets until they hit four inches. And every single snow they're pushing, say an alley out into South Summit. Now we have to take away from something else that we're going to do and go pick it up from a private, private water, private parking lot. If we are doing windrow, it's a big deal, it's another trip load of snow. In the month of February, due to the small storms we had, this, none of them were even that big. We increased our fuel consumption by two-thirds. January, we spent about $3,000 in fuel. We increased our fuel consumption by two-thirds. January, we spent about $3,000 in fuel. And February, we spent $9,000, all attributable to the snowstorms. So just kind of give you an idea of the effect this has had. The committee did review the current street ordinances that apply to snow removal. The street, the committee recommended ticketing the property owners after a letter said when the snow is in violation of the ordinance. The Melverson's blocking the street, blocking it for each. But here we are at the end of the snowy, snowy.
We could be prepared, we, we could be prepared for that, Charlie.
This is when everybody gets a little, little edgy about snow including us. We, we spend all our time dealing with it, getting ice removed, piles from different places, so. Uh, the committee also discussed the farmers market, the Dave Eaters and Caleb Clark of the farmers market. Or, I guess is what they are. They'd like to move it to the downtown area. There was discussions about the North Sundar Avenue closure and using, utilizing the parking lot there, this, a private parking lot. Or the city parking lot next to Donna's Diner for the, for the farmers market. Mr. Eaters and Mr. Clark are going to discuss the options with their, their board and the council. The council or the committee was supportive of moving, providing our facilities for this and doing what we need to, to support it. It's just a matter of them deciding whether or not they want to move downtown. That's all for that committee.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody else have anything on snow removal? Okay. Moving on to the street signs on Warwick Street. I've noticed that since the police departments moved, uh, we quit parking on Warwick. There's a couple of signs on the, on the painting wall there that say, law enforcement parking only. I spoke with Sheriff Koldard. He's the only one that arcs over there. His staff- I spoke with Sheriff Koldard, he's the only one that parks over there, his deputies on occasion. Um, he told me that he was fine with us removing those street signs so that regular citizens can park uh by that retaining wall. Um, and he said if the deputies do want to park there, there's plenty of parking. It's also been brought to my attention that not a lot of people park there. Uh, but I figured that at least they would be able to have the option if the council would entertain a motion to remove those street signs so that people can park there. And plus with the uh, the uh, um, construction that's going on and everything, maybe if somebody had business at the bank or whatever, they'd be able to, to just park around, um, just on that side of the street. So do we entertain a motion to remove the uh no parking but law enforcement signs from the retaining wall on Warwick?
I make a motion, uh, we, we remove those signs.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Do you have any comments regarding those signs being there or removed?
You know, at this point, we don't have a ton of vehicles to park usually because there's essentially only four of us left at this point, but uh, um, you know, we don't park there at all basically, so I don't have any objection to it. I don't think we need to designate any specific areas for law enforcement parking or anything like that. I, I know the sheriff's office has this uh portion back here on the backside of the jail, they have designated for law enforcement, although we don't park there either, that's their parking, but I foresee a need for it. The only thing I would like to do is at some point is find a place where we can park a couple of the vehicles that aren't in use, um, and I talked to Greg about this, to make sure we have access to power so we can put battery maintainers on and make sure they're ready to go anytime we need them. Um, but that's not, none of this parking around here is conducive to that because we don't have any power access. I don't have an issue with it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Thanks, council. Uh, moving on to the Water Committee. Mr. Mayor.
The Water Committee had met a couple of different times. Um, this last meeting we had was with the actual water board with um Cambridge Water District. We reviewed not only the residential customer rates, um, along with the Cambridge Water District rates and read through the multiple times through the agreement that was put in place up to twenty thirty-three, um, that's current for a while. After going through discussions and everything with um both entities, um, the committee basically come to a consensus that with the language that's in the current um contract and amendments that were made, that amendment is um probably should be considered. And the board, uh, Cambridge Water District Board was also agreeing with that. So what we decided was um kind of a recommendation that we would have the city attorney write uh an amendment and send to the Cambridge Water District to um see if they were level uh, would be okay with, with the amendments. Clarify some language in that agreement that really doesn't uh kind of gives two sided pieces in the language to clarify that language a little more in the amendment. So I think that's where we should probably start with, is do an amendment um to see if that Cambridge Water District would be agreeable to those amendments. So if that's, you know, other than that, you know, I would make a motion that we would um with the assistance of our city attorney, is making an amendment to this contract to submit to the Cambridge Water District for acceptance.
Second. So we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. So we'll move on to that contract. Thank you, Bill. Is there anything else from the Water Committee?
Nothing other than that, we're good.
Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to department head reports. Uh, please keep their comments in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Calls for service, this is March third, twenty twenty-five, Newcastle Police Department, a hundred and fifty-six, Weston County Sheriff's Office, a hundred and twenty-three, Upton Police Department, zero, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, four, Weston County Fire Protection District, two, Upton Volunteer Fire Department, two, Newcastle Ambulance, nineteen, Upton the ambulance, two. The second item is we had two different companies come and look at the roof above the police department in reference to the leak we discovered a few weeks ago. Um, the first company was load roofing out of Gillette. They came and took a look at it and they, they said they actually felt like the, the roof was in pretty good condition yet. They were able to determine that the leak was coming from, and I hope I got this term here right, I'm not a roofer, but Greg correctly put it wrong, he said it was coming from the scupper, which is the um portion of the roof that goes through the, essentially the wall of the edge. Did I get that right or did I butcher it? So.
That's kind of what is in place for all water channels going to occur, or going to uh, if you notice on the side over here, there's rectangles cut out of the airbrush wall. That's the discover.
That's kind of a fun word.
Yeah.
I never heard of discover.
He said, I looked it up. Did you just say? And uh, at any rate, he said that's where the leak was originating from and he, he said it was started there and working its way back as the reason for where it surfaced. Um, they were gonna provide a bid just to repair uh those portions and he said the roof looks pretty decent, but the uh scupper was in, was probably installed shoddy or incorrectly to start with. So they felt like they could repair those uh and fix the problem for now. Um, the second gentleman that came was actually not a, not the contractor that'll be fixing it, but uh he basically bids out the materials for the contractor, and he had a little different perspective on it. He said that he felt like the roof was installed improperly to start with because it has areas where it pools water and now, I kind of took this with a grain of salt because he's trying to sell us a roof that's probably ten to thousands of dollars, so. But he said that when, when they're built in that way and it allows the water to cool, it actually causes the damage from the UV rays from the sun to be more intensified because of the pooling water. And he said it'll cause areas where it seems to start to fake. And sure Greg has more insight on that than I would have. I don't know if he fed me a line entirely or if there's some proof to that, but um at any rate, he was gonna provide us a bid to review the whole roof. Uh, and I told him that was fine and as a courtesy, he actually figured out where it was leaking and it was in fact the scupper and he re-pocked it and said that should actually fix it for that vehicle, so. Um, we do, should have a couple of different bids forthcoming on uh repair and replacement of the roof. And they, they did also ask us to continue to look into the possibility of it being under warranty because according to load roofing, it should last a whole lot longer than it has. But I, I know, I talked to Chuck. Chuck. Forget his name for a minute. And Chuck was gonna look and see if, when that was installed and what documents we had to see if there was any potential that it was still under warranty. The one thing the, the second gentleman did tell me was that um because there had been water introduced underneath of the, the membrane into the insulation, that it was kind of like cancer and it was gonna continue to degrade over time, uh because they didn't really have a good way to dry out and there's no way to uncover it and let it dry. But again, I was kind of wondering how much of that was really true and had much of it was he was trying to sell us something. But um I think we have a, the crisis averted for the time being and hopefully by next council meeting, those bids will be in and I'll be able to present those to you guys. Um, but at any rate, I suppose we should maybe consider trying to find some money or save up some money for the day when that does happen. I don't know if we have a fund, if the city takes care of those types of issues or how that works. The next item, I mean, just mentioned a couple of things we're working on. Uh, we went to the job and career fair at the high school on the twelfth. We passed out some information about internship program that we're working on that'll be available for high school students next semester and just trying to make contact with some high school students that are interested in the field of law enforcement and hopefully get some interest in that program and maybe long-term develop us some candidates to be police officers. Um, and over the past couple of weeks, I did want to point this out to all of you because I feel like I promised a few of you different things that I haven't made good on yet, but we've been extremely busy. We've opened multiple cases that have resulted in charging documents for ten different felony controlled substance charges.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
We've opened multiple cases that have resulted in charging documents for ten different felony controlled substance charges in a two-week time period, which is quite significant. Some of those charges have been filed and some are still being considered for being filed. But for whatever reason, we have had a huge uptick in, at least the control substance violations that we've interdicted in the past couple of weeks. And those investigations continue on and will likely turn into more of those same types of investigations. So we have been working on a tremendous amount of overtime and what makes fun about those investigations. And that was all of, you know, it doesn't seem like I have a lot to report, but we've certainly been really busy. That's all I have.
I'm sorry to hear that, Chief.
Yeah, it's not a good thing.
It's all I can hear. Does anybody else have any questions for Chief?
With the, some of these cases you have, how, how many of those were results of deployment of the dog?
Um, one of them was a direct result of the dog deployment. And the rest of them, we actually just.
Stupidity.
Interdicted off of traffic stops or calls or, yeah. Um, one of them was trying to act on the subject at once and we got him chased down, he had it on him and it was off of a traffic stop.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief Thompson.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Attorney Delon Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, counsel, I am from Hughes Ordinance Number One, Series Twenty Twenty-Five. Um, it is the required first reading for the annexation of territory in regards to the farm for petition that's filed on January tenth, uh, of twenty twenty-five. Uh, ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance annexing territory describing the petition for annexation dated January tenth, twenty twenty-five. Be obtained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section one, annexation of territory. The city council of the city of Newcastle thus hereby annex the following described real property and improvements pursuant to the petition for annexation originally dated January tenth, twenty twenty-five and filed with the city clerk. Section two, compliance with Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh three. The petition for annexation filed with the city clerk is signed and dated by all landowners owning the area sought to be annexed and contains a legal description of the area sought to be annexed. A request, um, a request to describe property be annexed, a statement each signer and, and owner of land and description of his land within the area proposed to be annexed and contained a map of the area, all in compliance with Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh three. Section three, compliance with Wyoming statute uh fifteen dash one dash four oh three, uh subsection C and D. The Newcastle city clerk within ten days from the date of uh the petition for annexation was filed determined the petition substantially complied with the requirements of Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh three and certified compliance of the petition pursuant to the provisions of Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh three, subsection B. Section four, public hearing. The governing body of the city of Newcastle established a date, time, and place for public hearing to determine if the proposed annexation complies with the provisions of Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two, and that the public hearing determined the following. Uh, section five, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after its passage, approval, and publication. Uh, so do we entertain a motion to pass ordinance number one, um, series twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Dr. Sturridge, you in?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is this the second reading?
No. This is the first reading. Any questions?
We had a proposal last.
Last council meeting, it was a public hearing at seven thirty in regard to this annexation.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Attorney Hughes. Um, moving on to Bert Trecker, Stacy Haggerty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report?
Nothing to report. All right, moving on to Public Works Supervisor Greg Stumpf, and I know he always has something to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first Scott Thompson has completed his inter-level driving training for CBL, for CBL. I recommend Scott Thompson for a fifty cent raise for completing the inter-level driving as of March fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we entertain a motion to approve a raise for Scott Thompson?
I'm not, you're gonna, you're gonna do it?
I just want to move that we give Scott Thompson a fifty cent raise as of March fifth.
A second. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes.
Thank you, council. My next item, uh, we drafted the Jake Brake signs and I'm gonna hold a whiteout to get proper permits in place. In the process of working through that right now. The water meter at well one used for state engineering reporting quit working. It's only twenty-four years old, I think. So after, this is one we have to get replaced fairly quickly because we do use it for the reporting of how much water we're going to use each month to require, to require the state engineers on this. The, it's not 4,775 was the first quote, we're waiting on 200 quotes. The problem is well two and well four meters on the same age. So we'd like to replace all three while we're doing it. We have just over 14,000 is the first quote we have. The one we have, the one we have to do right now.
Do you happen to know where they keep these things?
They keep them everywhere.
So the other two are just going to be backups?
No, no, the well one and well, well two and well four also have the same age of the meter.
Oh, so you just do it just?
We'd like to just replace all three of them because we, we are planning on budgeting this coming fiscal year to replace these anyway. This one quit. If we buy four of them, we actually, three of them get a discount.
What about 10 of them?
We don't need 10. We only need three.
We might get a bigger discount.
Did I bring in one free? Yeah. That's, that's the number four, I guess. If it's all right with the council, we'll go ahead and order the three of them.
If you're spending $12,000 though?
Yep. 14,000 more.
Is that in your budget? Do you have the money?
We do have the money in the budget. We saved some money that we budgeted for the one meter, the honor kiln. We budgeted 30,000 for the quote last year, but this time we just purchased a meter for just under 18 years. So we saved money there on that one.
And you'll keep the other two for spare?
Uh, we can. The problem is they're antiquated and they're not supported anymore. So if we pull them out of service, once it de-energizing for next number of period, extended period of time, then we have to figure out how to reconfigure that.
Do we entertain a motion to purchase the three said water meters?
I would allow Public Works Supervisor Stumpf to purchase the three water meters needed.
Do we have a second? Second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there anyone? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. You get some more water meters.
Thank you. And yeah, Tom, I hope you're on 14, 15 dollars probably.
I just want to pursue those things and claims.
Yeah.
Thrills me.
Next item is the State Street Clean Rock. We looked at the numbers. Uh, it's roughly going to take about 3,718 dollars worth of clean rock to put on that road. It depends on how the council would like it done. If they want it pressed in or it mixes with the J base fines, we would also need a regular roller then because we don't have anything big enough to do that. Currently I have 10,199 dollars in my budget, leaving 6,481 dollars. Take one to two days to haul the material in and get it placed. Also in our budget before the end of this fiscal year, we have another pallet rejuvenator oil to purchase for the asphalt recycler. That's 300 dollars a pallet. We've been working on surveying the streets, see how bad the cracks are, see what we need to do. We need to do more than just the pallet we normally do. And from looks of it, we've got some early cracks in more streets than what we actually anticipated. We're going to buy another pallet, we want to buy another pallet of practicing material for the street. And that's an additional 2300 dollars. It would put us really close to going over budget to do this right now. With the 6,400 we have, be looking at another 3,000 if we have anything like gray ball of earth happen where we have to haul in five or six loads of J base because we're actually fairly short on J bases right now. It would put us really close to on that single line.
So Supervisor Stumpf, I live on that street. We did our due diligence and checked into the cost for providing the clean rock. I've been able to contact several of my neighbors. Uh, none of them think that the clean rock is really going to help and that it might present more of a problem by rolling into the drainages.
I don't think you contacted all your neighbors.
Um, so although, although Linda had provided a citizens business and writing at the last meeting, we followed up on that. But it's my opinion and the council could differ, but I don't think that we need to take any action at this time. It's been dry. Uh, there hasn't been any problems with any mud or anything recently.
The other side of the clean rock. If you take a drive down the country road, they put two inches of clean rock on and you can see where it all ended up. It's all pushed to the sides. The first time we drop a snow cloud, it's all going to end up on the road unless we, unless we do more work, wet it enough where it actually pushes clean rock down into the J base.
Maybe we do something at some point? No?
It's, it's up to the council. I, I don't like doing clean rock. Blading it is miserable. It all ends up in the drainages and all we end up doing is hauling it off every different time in the drainages.
How far away are we from being able to chip and spray that street?
Um, we're putting the numbers together right now for the equipment we would need. We're doing the research.
I think that's the answer. I think that when we get our natural role about chipping and spraying some of these things, that, that I think that Linda will be much more happy with chipping spray than she would clean rock or clean off them.
The research.
I think that's the answer. I think that when we get our natural role about chipping and spraying some of these things, that, that I think that Linda will be much more happy with chipping spray than she would clean rock or clean off them.
Yeah, it's, it's the better answer to, to this role. If we put clean rock down first, we're going to pull back off.
Can't get rid of it anyway.
Yeah, I really don't. Clean rock's okay, but in my own driveway, the first time I dropped the snow cloud, it all ended up in a pile at the end of my driveway.
Well, I for one am more than interested in, in your numbers that you're getting prepared to do this chip and spray.
Yeah, we're preparing that for the budget, so we're trying to figure out where to put that in the budget. Because it's just too expensive to hire a contractor to do it. Mobilization estimate for one, one company we talked to, they're out of Utah, they were talking around a hundred thousand dollars to mobilize up here. I have 266,000 in budget for it. That just took half, almost half the project, yeah, third of the project.
Is it the consensus of the council that we take no action at this time?
What about dressing the roads with MagClor though?
MagClor, if, if we do MagClor, we have to coordinate with some other areas doing MagClor. We can't lay it. Every time it rains, it releases more mag, sticks in the vehicles and actually causes more rust than what we use on the streets. It is a, it is an issue. I, I drove a lot of county roads when I was working in the districts and dealt with a lot of mag out there. After a while, it's a pothole, it'll start washboarding and the second you blade it, you just wasted the mag. It was about 4,000 dollars if we could tie onto somebody else's project to mag that road.
I think the money would be better spent if we found another option. You want?
Just to inform the council, our roll-off truck is out of service. We've got the parts ordered, but it's been down for a week and a half. Hopefully the parts will be here tomorrow and we can get it fixed late tomorrow or Wednesday. So the cardboard roll-up hasn't been dumped in two weeks. It's not going to get dumped tomorrow, I don't think. There's, there's no way for us to haul them.
So I went out on Tuesday, the site says empty on Tuesday. I go, well, what time on Tuesday?
Depends on who's available. We're only going to have MagClor running by Wednesday.
Other question on that. I seen a truck the other day that sent Newcastle Roll Off Services or something like that. Donut Maverick.
Oh, I have no idea. There's another company in town. The only two I know of is Hurricane Services and Odie's. So I'm going to notice. We have submitted the statement of intent for the Highway 16 Daffler project for the 2026 construction year. So eventually we're going to have to probably make a decision on whether we want to move forward that project or not. The EV charging stations, I spoke with, I contacted Black Hills Energy and we began working towards the EV charging stations. Black Hills Energy only offers a rebate for each station we put in, 3,000 dollars per station we're looking at three. They sent me a 396-page spreadsheet with all the approved EV charging stations. I have no idea where I am looking at. Talked to, talked to our local, uh, local electricians. They have put these in other places, getting folks for the stations. The 2026 projects we have planned, the West Ramrod Project and the Lees Farm Stormwater Master Plan. We held the interviews for the request for qualifications and the four engineering groups submitted statements of qualification. We interviewed them one night and finalized everything. We scored WWC Engineering out of Gillette and Sheridan as the highest. I would recommend we, uh, request a proposal from WWC Engineering for the 2026 projects.
Do we entertain a motion to accept the request for proposal from W?
WWC Engineering?
WWC Engineering?
Make a motion that we accept the WWC Engineering for the projects. Public Works Stumpf for the 2026 project year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes?
One final item, um, this is probably going to take a little bit. It's on the report about coordination and the need for it. Basically EPA has said in the Level Two assessment in October, the city have, let's see, begin continuous disinfection within 60 days or develop a, develop and implement a plan to eliminate persistent DC sample, sample results. The plan must be approved by EPA.
EPA said that?
Yes. We got this. I think I said that thing before, but I wasn't sure. We worked with Inberg Miller Engineers out of, they're actually at several places. The problem is the money it would take to do the repairs to tank one, I don't think is the most fiscally responsible thing to do. The tank is 90 plus years old. We bought it used.
So are you thinking that's what's causing the problem? Is the age of the tank?
Well, that and several repairs and I'll have to lean somewhat on Councilman Steeson because he's seen this firsthand and actually worked on the thing. First thing, these pipes here, if they're not flooded on the inside, you can get water standing in that creating stagnant water and it will grow bacteria and spread throughout the tank. The bigger problem, at the top of this rivet here, there's a pipe going in inside of all the tank. Between this, this layer of this and this row of riddles here, they put a patch on the inside. We don't have any history on this, we don't know why they did it. But the way they did it was the worst part about it. They left a space in thickness of the rivets. They actually welded the plate on top of the two rivets instead of putting it in between the two rivets. I think when I was 10 years old, I could probably weld better than what those looked. And I think Councilman Steeson will, will vacuum that. They're starting to make this, this coating isn't holding. So we've talked to two different tank companies. One set a half a million dollars, you have one set a million dollars to fix this problem. The other thing we have is the rivet roof. They, there's been some patches welded on it different times. The coating is cracking along these seams allowing water to enter the tank from outside. There are several issues with tank one. We haven't got an estimate on it. The engineers just basically said we have no idea what this would cost. But if we're looking at a couple, three million dollars to try and fix this tank to prevent the problem.
So I'm going to add something, Greg. I talked to people with State EQ and they were under the impression that this tank was supposed to have been replaced like a decade or two ago and it never got done. So they couldn't believe that we still have the tank in operation. And yes, all of the leaking issues and stuff were still happening even when I was at the shop. So it's a problem and we need to do something about it.
And essentially we pushed the project back to 2028 to give us time to do rates. We'll put away enough reserves that if we have overruns on the project or something like that, or the bids come in too high, we can still manage to do.
Are you talking about coordination?
We're talking about replacing the tank. That's what ultimately has to be done in order to stop this. We don't have time and I cannot provide a guaranteed safe drinking plan under the condition of the tank. Tank two has similar issues. We have a project planned for 2026 to work on tank two.
So we're going to spend a million dollars and then a new tank?
That's just it. The tank integrity isn't very, like it's a nine-year-old tank. The last time we sampled us and recoded it, 2013. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you welded 404 patches on the floor? I was in there for weeks and hours and hours. There was, there was talk of cutting out the old floor and putting in a new floor. It was, it was bad for that patio and the roof. Some of those patches we put on and at the county control thought that when you're welding on a tank, it's got rivets on each. Anytime you get close to those rivets, that heat will start swelling that area and then it'll leak through those rivets and it's. So essentially we need to weld, weld the entire roof, weld the new floor and replace this, repair down to the inside for who knows how many millions of dollars or plan to replace it. Problem is getting to that point, getting to that 2028 timeline when we're going to replace it. We cannot keep having these issues pop up. Gary Steele has recommended coordination as a, as an answer to the issue. After we get tank two, tank one done, we can look at possibly shutting the system off if we want to. We should have had a system online years ago. We actually got a permit to construct for a coordination system already. But because the EQ regulations have been really nervous, we can't put what we wanted to at pump station. wanted to at the pump station. So we looked at different options for chlorine gas versus liquid chlorine versus on-site chlorine generation. The regulations involved with chlorine gas are stringent and it's dangerous. I've worked around it. You have to have health respect for it. The safer options is the liquid chlorine. Liquid chlorine, we're gonna need about 500 to 1,000 gallon tank, we're gonna fill monthly. Or we go with on-site chlorine generation, which is actually cheaper to operate over a 20-year period. And he has quoted that information in his, his report as well. I'm not sure how I can provide the clean drinking water without coordination to kill. The other side of this is our number of breaks we have per year and those issues along with that. It's a known answer. And, uh, we can equalize positive samples through water leakings. We coordinate the parts, we coordinate the pipes. When we're done, putting everything back together, uh, we flush the line as much as we can, we do a sample after each time for the AWWA standard. But there's, we still have one lane we have not yet cleaned up. We still have to turn York Street line back on because we cannot get two, two clean samples 24 hours apart. So everything coupled together, this is why we're at where we're at. I don't like it any better than anybody else. All I hear is tap water. I'm not a fan of chlorine. But this is where we're at. We have to.
So if we build a new tank, it will be fresh water again?
Hopefully, yeah. It'll be a better situation than it is now, so.
It's to get to that, get to that day that we're gonna build a new tank.
Due to the number of hot samples that we've been drawing, we're, we're on the radar with the State DEQ as well as Region 8 EPA, which provides, uh, um, our primary seat for drinking water, um, in Wyoming. So, I mean, it's not ideal, it's not what everybody wants, but we have to be able to, uh, provide clean, disinfected drinking water until we can address the larger problems of replacing the tanks and those.